Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the January 27th, 2025 school committee meeting to order.
Someone's unmuted in the room on Zoom. They need to mute.
It looks like it's, it might be your shirt. Yeah, it looks better. Okay. All right. All set? All right, I will call the January 27th, 2025 school committee meeting to order. Tonight, I have the honor of chairing the meeting. Unfortunately, Ms. Curti is feeling a little under the weather, but she did want to send along the message that she apologizes that she could not be here tonight, given that we will be going over budget details. So I'm just going to read this brief statement about the meeting being held remotely. This meeting is being held in person and remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to the Chapter 2 of Acts, certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law. Chapter 30A, Section 20 asks that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harper Media here tonight who is recording. We're also recording on Zoom for the purposes of minutes. Is there anyone in the audience or on the call on Zoom who is planning to record? If you could just raise your hand or let us know. No? Clear and on? Okay. I'd just like to note that tonight I am joined in person with my fellow school committee members, Tim Miller-Demsey, Carrie Nie, Michelle Air, Ally Anderson, and then Matt Cosman will, Matt Cosman will be participating remotely. So we'll just be taking roll call votes tonight. There he is. All right, so moving on to our first order of business, which is approval of minutes. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 13.
Any discussion? All right, so roll call vote. So I will start with you, Matt, first.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, so motion for January 16th minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on January 16.
Second? Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, so moving on to Item 3. This is the portion of the meeting that we've set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments from items that are not on the agenda. If you have anything related to a new business item, just kind of hang back and ask for questions then. Otherwise, if anyone would like to speak, if you could just raise your hand now and let us know if you'd like to be recognized. And if so, I will read a statement if we have anyone who has any comments or questions. Anyone on Zoom? Nope. Okay. I don't see anyone. So moving on to Item 4, which is superintendent's report.
Great, well, this evening I'll keep my superintendent's report fairly brief, given the very lengthy agenda we have this evening. But did want to share that last Thursday, Erica Pollard, Dr. Cataldo and I attended the Massachusetts Association for School Superintendent's Midwinter Meeting. And there was a really terrific presentation by BU Professor Jill Walsh, who gave a really in-depth presentation about her research around teen mental health and the impact of cell phones. And this synced very much with some of the work that our team is doing this year related to our all-community read of anxious generation. Wanted to ask the school committee to please save the date for the Metco Advocacy Day. This is an annual event. We've had great participation from the school committee. So this date will be on Thursday, March 20th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Massachusetts State House. And in addition to school committee members, Metco and district leaders, students and families, we'll have an opportunity to meet with legislators to discuss the needs of the Metco program. In addition, superintendents and Metco directors will also be meeting with legislators at the annual legislative briefing breakfast on Tuesday, February 25. So that is in addition to the Advocacy Day for school committee members. I just wanted to clarify that. Wanted to thank Erica Pollard this evening for her terrific work this year in launching what we call our graduate credit equivalent courses. So Erica, would you mind just sharing a brief update on your recent, most recent course?
Sure, so we have one meeting left for our first graduate equivalent course, which was Envisiting the Portrait of a Learner. And this was a great opportunity to sort of integrate the work that the steering committee was doing with the work of the course and give teachers a little bit of more voice in that process in a standardized way. We have another graduate equivalent course that's beginning at the end of the month. That's going to be run by Monica Matthews and Holly Goggan. It's called Quick Rates Across the Curriculum. And I just sent out a memo today, I didn't even add it to this list, that we're going to run another one on the behavior code to follow up a little bit more on the work that we started with Jessica Mina.
Terrific, and very grateful to Erica for all of her work on that. And last but not least, just wanted to share a timeline again for our strategic planning process. So we recently wrapped up committee work for the Portrait of a Learner, and I'll be sharing that in February. And thank you to Michelle Air for her work on that with us. And so strategic planning will begin after February vacation. Grateful to all who have volunteered. And so I believe it's Carrie who will be joining us and Jen Benham. So thank you for joining us for that. And there'll be broad representation of administration, educators, students, and parents and caregivers on that committee. And so stay tuned for more information on that.
Thank you. All right, Item 5, which is communications.
None received.
Later, student communications?
None today.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications from the school committee members?
Ally? I know we received as a committee, but also individually, quite a few emails, both about the Spanish and the elementary language programs, as well as the writing specialists and the interventionist. So I just wanted to share that out, that we did receive a lot of community support and internal support from within the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. All right, so moving on to Item 6, which is unfinished business. To receive fiscal FY '26 budget update and approval of fees and act as appropriate.
Terrific, well, thank you for everyone who's joined this evening, both in person and online. We appreciate the engagement and very much welcome community feedback as we work our way through budget season. So this evening is our third in a series of eight presentation on our budget. We appreciate again that the budget process is a long and arduous one, and we are grateful with the collegial and collaborative spirit with which our team and school community approach these conversations. So for those joining the budget conversation for the first time this evening, I just wanted to provide some context for you and a brief overview of our conversation to date. So this is a little bit like coming into a conversation midstream. And so I wanted to get those of you who are new to the conversation a bit up to speed. But I would encourage anyone new to the conversation to take a look at our website, which has both the slides and recording of our January 13th and January 18th presentations, 16th presentations. And just wanted to remind the community as well that though this is only our third presentation this evening, this process actually began in October. We began planning in October for the following year with conversations around student needs, districts' priorities. And in the conversations this year, our team aspired to level services, understanding that reductions or reallocations would be necessary in order to meet the 3.5% memorandum of understanding with the town. And I'll clarify that a bit further for those of you new to the conversation. So in short, our task was to maximize the available budget to serve the needs of students. And wanted to share again this evening that we are in a very uniquely human business in education and want to make sure that we're approaching any conversations about budget with the appropriate care and sensitivity, again, given the human nature of our profession. And so I'll have Sheri forward to the next slide. And again, wanted to make the point that a budget process is an iterative process. And so those of you who are here through the full hamster wheel of version after version, you will see the changes over the next several weeks. Ayesha and Eric and I are often making adjustments to our presentation right up until the time of the presentation because of the constantly evolving landscape, new information that comes in, new analysis that we do. And so if you could look to the next, Sheri. So again, this is just an overview of the budget calendar. So we are now in our third meeting of eight. And again, just in terms of communications, I want to thank Ally Anderson for doing a great job of preparing recap summaries of each school committee meeting, so you can go back, view the tapes. And she's created some timestamps, so you can be efficient in looking at past conversations. Again, all slides and documents are posted on our website. And in principal newsletters, we'll share weekly calendar reminders, so the community is aware of when the budget meetings are happening. And so tonight, we'll give just the briefest of overviews of our budget priorities, assumptions, and drivers. I would encourage you to look at the January 13th presentation, which goes much deeper into some of the data that we considered, enrollment data and so on, that we considered when making our decisions. But I did allude earlier to our Portrait of a Learner, which is a document that's in development, that we hope will be kind of a north star for some of our decision-making. And what's important about the Portrait of a Learner is it really does center students and their needs. So in an educational setting, we're looking to have a strong core program to promote the skills and competencies that our learners will need, but also have a range of offerings to meet the diverse needs, interests, and future paths of our students. I mentioned that in February, we'll be presenting the full document of Portrait of a Learner. But just as a way of preview, we'll be sharing some of the ways that we'll be aligning our program, so students become effective communicators, skillful collaborators, creative problem solvers, responsible citizens, and mindful individuals. And so again, more to come on that in February. Also to come in February is our next round of strategic planning. So in 2025 school year here, we are currently still working off of our old strategic plan, which ran from '22 to '25. Many of the themes of this strategic plan are evergreen themes that will continue into our next strategic plan. And we did consider these objectives as we were doing our budget planning. So to get a bit deeper into some of our budget priorities, I mentioned the Portrait of a Learner and our strategic plan, which are, again, really north stars for our budget planning. But we do, in our planning, also center our multi-tiered system of academic and social emotional supports. So particularly since 2020, we've really been focusing in on fleshing out these supports so we can strengthen the academic and social emotional supports to ensure the success of all students. For those of you who have attended our school committee meetings, you know that we also are working towards a strategic plan that's specific to student services and special education, that is a result of an audit that we did recently. And so we are continuing to center student services and special education improvement as part of our budget process. An evergreen budget priority is also professional development. In an educational setting, professional development is one of the best levers that we have for driving a district forward and continuing to improve and enhance our best practices. And then finally, any school system, facilities and operations are a must-do. And so we do need to provide access to safe, welcoming, well-maintained facilities with reliable and high-quality technology. And we, this year, also want to put an emphasis on promoting efficient financial and HR operations to support the smooth functioning of the district. And so I did want to just take a brief moment for those, again, who are new to the conversation, to explain what we mean when we refer throughout the presentation to the 3.5% MOU, or memorandum of understanding. So the MOU is a four-year commitment that was signed in March of 2023 by the school committee, select board, advisory, the then superintendent at the time and the town manager, to maintain cost increases at a specific rate that was proposed by the Sustainable Budget Task Force. And so this means that the annual operating budget for the town and the school department is capped at 3.5% for the FY '25, '26, '27, and '28 school years. So when this memorandum was crafted, and it was around the time of our last override, and so at that time, there was an understanding that with the increases in personnel, special education, and other costs, that there likely would be deficits in the FY '25 to FY '28 school years. And so I did pull out a quote from that MOU that really clarifies what this MOU means for our budget planning. And so the quote is that "financial limitations in '25 to '28 may require the town to prioritize the utilization of available resources, which may leave certain programs and activities funded at a lower level than desired or not funded at all. Town administrator and superintendent will be responsible for those prioritizations and cuts for the municipal and school budgets." Again, we'll refer to this MOU throughout the document, and we'll discuss in further detail. Given the 3.5% MOU, we did make some budget assumptions going into this season. So we did take a zero-based budgeting approach for anything that's discretionary, which is a fairly small proportion of our budget. And so things like supplies and techs and apps, we built those up from zero. So we made assumptions about nothing and just, you know, really built those up from zero. We also took a close look at any, what we call efficiencies, reallocations, and we also did take a deep dive into our enrollment in order to make some of the decisions that we presented. We looked deeply at offsets and revenue, and tonight's conversation will center largely around some proposed new fees. And then finally, again, the message that was given to our district leaders is to approach level services to the extent that we can within the MOU. And we were trying to be as creative as possible in approaching the level services. And so in terms of our key budget drivers, there are no surprises there. Our main budget driver is meeting contractual obligations. And so these would include salary increases ranging from 3% to 7%, increased tuition reimbursement stipends, longevity, and increased substitute costs to recover extended leave. Like any family, our utility and fuel costs are increasing. So just as one point of information, our light bills will be increasing 6% as of January 2025. And two of our buildings are heated by electricity, including the new foster school. Water is increasing by 3%. Sewer is increasing by 8%. And so in the context of a 3.5% MOU, you can see that this would present a challenge. In addition, we do continue to have some special education and student service needs, particularly in the area of SEL and behavioral supports as we're coming out of the pandemic. The academic gains are progressing nicely, but we do still see a lag in some of the SEL and behavioral supports that students are needing, as well as other specialized services such as speech and language. We also continue to have an increase in special education tuitions and services. And these tuition rates are fixed by an organization called Operational Services Division. So they annually provide an estimated rate of inflation. The increase for the FY '26 school year was named at 3.67%. However, individual programs can apply for something called program reconstruction, which can allow them to raise tuition significantly more than the 3.67%. And several of the programs that our Hingham students attend have applied for program reconstruction and will increase their tuition at rates significantly above 3.67%. So at our last meeting, Ayesha did a great job of presenting some of our financial data. Tonight, we're just going to give you a little bit of the high-level overview. And so this first chart here just shows our budget in terms of the major buckets. You'll see that 81% of our budget is personnel with the associated contractual costs. About 15% of our budget relates to other contracted items, things like some of the utility costs that I mentioned, transportation. And then finally, the discretionary piece of the pie, and that would include things like supplies and techs and technology apps, only accounts for about 4% of our budget. And so again, you can see the limits to some of the budget levers that we have. And so again, stressing the fact that we have many fixed costs, the contracts, utilities out of district tuitions, really what we're left with for budget levers, we have already made significant cuts to those discretionary lines that I mentioned. So last year, we made deep cuts to tax budgets, supply budgets, app budgets, and so on. And so really, what we're left with in terms of levers include efficiencies, and that would include retirements that we could replace at a lower salary, leaves that we could, again, either replace at a lower salary or simply don't fill. Fees and tuition, you'll hear about fees in particular tonight. And so that's why I highlighted those two categories in yellow. And then the only other levers we really have are reallocating, restructuring, or making reductions. And so our team tried to be as creative as we could to minimize the reductions and lean more heavily into some of those other budget levers. So given that we did have an MOU with the town, in some ways, it made our budget planning a bit more precise this year, and that we knew early what the figure was that we were working with. And so for next year, the amount allocated by the town for the school department budget is $70,383,752. And so we are working within that figure in order to approach as close as we can to level services. And so again, Ayesha, at our last meeting, did a great job of sharing this chart here, which provides an overview of the budget. Tonight, we're going to be sharing some proposed changes to our initial proposals. After the school committee has had a chance to deliberate, we'll go back and revise this chart here based on some of the proposed changes to reallocations and to our fees. So we will go back and update this. This is an older, older document. Similarly, this document here takes a deeper dive into some of our grants and revolving funds, and this information will change in particular depending on how the school committee lands on some of the fees that we're proposing. And then finally, again, this is some of our revolving funds. This information will also change based on some of the information presented this evening. So for those of you, again, joining the conversation tonight, where we left off in our conversation as of our last meeting, as we had proposed the necessary $1.7 million in reductions slash efficiencies slash reallocations. And again, this is where our conversation left off. So we are, in the next few slides, going to share our updates this evening based on some of the new information that we have. And so I'll ask Sheri to just quickly pass through, again, at our last meetings on the 13th and 16th, we presented, I think there are about six slides, Sheri, so you can kind of scan through those. These are some of the previous proposals that we are in the process of updating for you this evening. Yeah, I think one more. There we go. Okay. So this evening, we're going to share all of the new information that's come in since our last meeting, share the proposed fees, and then share how we would make some different choices based on this new information. However, again, these are proposals that are a give-and-take in conversation. And so I will always make sure we're timestamping our slides, so if people are going back, please understand that these are our proposals as of this date, and they do tend to change over time. So new information that we have since our last conversation. We do have, at Foster Elementary School, we'll be collapsing from four sections to three sections based on kind of an uneven cohort coming through. At Hingham High, we have a retirement that we believe we can replace at a lower salary. And so that will represent a savings. We have an elementary leave that was recently announced that we will be able to replace for next year at a lower salary. We had an additional social studies leave that was announced, and we looked at enrollment and will not fill that position next year. We had an efficiency at the middle school of a long-term sub for next year. We were able to move some technology to capital. In addition to these additional savings, however, we have two bits of new information that we need to take into account. We are in the middle of kindergarten registration, which is always a challenging thing to predict. The census data that we have often is low, and our enrollment tends to be higher. Families often move into town right before their first child is off to kindergarten. And so we can usually make a fairly reasonable prediction. However, this year, we have a brand-new school, Foster School, online. And we did anticipate there would be an uptick in kindergarten enrollment at that school, and that has come to bear. And so we will need, based on the enrollment that we've received to date, and we still have two more weeks of open enrollment for kindergarten, we will need to add a kindergarten section at Foster, and so that will be an additional cost that we hadn't anticipated. Ayesha also did a deeper dive into some of the contractual items, and particularly, she took a look at how our increased parental leaves will impact our sub line and is estimating roughly an additional $50,000 for some of the paid leaves next year. And so the good news is all of this new information gives us about roughly $300,000 that we can then make different choices for what we presented at our last meeting. In addition to those efficiencies and new information that we have to work with, tonight, we will also present to the school committee, again, some of the fee proposals that we shared with you at our meeting on the 16th. This conversation is a little bit cart and horse, in that I am about to share with you our recommendations for how we'll allocate these funds if this information and the fees are voted on, and we will make adjustments as needed if we head down different conversations. We debated whether we do the fee vote first, but I think it's helpful for you to have a context for what the fees will be saving, and we can then continue the conversation from there. And so based on our proposed fees and some of the new information that we have, it doesn't necessarily change the number of reductions and efficiencies by that much. So we still need to make about 1.5 in reductions, 1.5 million in reductions and efficiencies, but they're different reductions and efficiencies. And so I think it'll be clearer as we go through our revised proposals. So this slide here looks a little bit like inviting you into our laundry room as we're folding laundry and so on. We purposefully left all of the information on here, so you can have a sense of what was added, what was taken away. And so this slide here includes all of the previous proposals that we made, any that were restored, we crossed out and wrote restored, and we also integrated some of the new information that we have. So just reviewing, this is strictly for elementary. I mentioned at our last meeting, we do have a retirement that we can replace at a lower salary, which will contribute to our budget. We have another leave that was announced that will be an additional efficiency, and so an additional cost savings. We did have, as Ally Anderson mentioned, have some significant reach out of the value of our writing specialist, which we would agree. Our writing specialist has really contributed a lot to our literacy initiatives. And so in the event that all of the other pieces fall into place, that is a position we're recommending to be restored. We do continue to have proposed cuts to our interventions. Again, very grateful for all of their work in MTSS. But at this time, we are leaving that recommendation on the table. Again, we did receive, reach out from the community, which we very much appreciate, about our elementary Spanish program, which I know our former world language director here very much appreciated that reach out. And so our proposal is to restore the proposed four FTEs, three point eight of those, and we can explain that in a bit more detail. We mentioned at our last meeting on the thirteenth that we do have an uneven cohort at ease that allows us to go from four sections to three. We have new information, as I mentioned, about the fifth grade at Foster. And then mentioned, we have new information about the need for an increased kindergarten teacher at Foster and the long-term sub leaves, an additional fifty. And so that adjusts our elementary reductions. So I'm happy to take questions slide by slide, or if you'd like me to present all of the revised slides, and you can have conversation at the end. I defer to the committee.
Where'd you prefer?
Just keep going. Keep going. Okay. Great. Okay. At the middle school, there were really no changes with the exception of that additional long-term sub efficiency. At the high school, the new items here include that retirement in tech engineering that would be an efficiency and that we can hire at a lower rate, an unfilled leave in social studies. Given this new information, we are recommending a restoration of the math position because as we dug deeper, there was a fear that that would impact our computer science offering. So computer science is part of the math department, and when we looked closer at that data, there was a fear that by cutting that position, we might reduce the range of our computer science offerings at the high school. There's no proposed change to the proposed reduction in the secondary special education administrator, no proposed change to the reduction in the communication specialist. We did, after much thought, we do request to restore some of the professional development expenditures, and the reason for that is in addition to our operating professional development budget, we rely heavily on two pieces of federal funding, Title II and Title IV, which many years can contribute seventy, eighty thousand to our professional development budget. That is under review, and we are fearful that we will not have a seventy to eighty thousand dollars for professional development, which will essentially zero out our professional development, other than our contractual obligations for covering graduate credit courses. And so again, we did think long and hard about that, but if we are losing in addition to seventy or eighty thousand, it will essentially zero out our PD budget. We do leave on the table the proposed maintenance reductions. And so the final analysis of all of those changes, I won't go through them line by line, but the important thing to note is this brings us to one point five million in reductions, and based on our calculations, we need one point four million. This leaves us with about fifty-four thousand that's as yet unallocated. The reason we left it unallocated is because we are in the middle of kindergarten registration season. There is a possibility we might need to add an additional kindergarten teacher, in which case we might need to make some slightly different choices, and didn't want to overallocate that, given that in another even week, I think we'll have a better sense of that kindergarten enrollment, and so didn't want to overallocate if we feared that that might be coming. And so that, those are our revised proposals and are open to any conversation around those, or we can go through the fee conversation and revisit.
I just had a question about the federal funding, the Title II and Title IV. Do you have any sense of when we'll know?
No, we don't. So it usually happens in the spring, so we'll usually get an early indicator. Title I in particular, we usually get an early hint of what might be coming. We did get kind of an early warning that for Title I, we're right on the cusp based on our demographics of being eligible for Title I, and that happens almost every year. We're usually within a very fine margin of qualifying for Title I. Title II and Title IV, I just don't have good visibility on that funding. Does anyone on the committee have any questions on the slides, any other additional questions on the slides she's presented?
Just a quick comment. I just want to say thank you because it's very clear that you guys not only listened to our feedback last time, but also to the public's input, and I know obviously it's a moving target and lots of things changing, but I appreciate the thought on this.
Yeah, so again, the principals and I and the central office team, we've spent lots of time together locked in an office, trying to hash this out, making liberal use of the whiteboard that we have in my office, and again, I'm very collaborative and collegial, and again, welcome the community input that did help refine our decision.
It's like Matt has a question. Go ahead, Matt.
Hey, thank you. So yeah, a couple, echo Allie's comments, thank you so much for this. A couple of quick questions slash clarifications. For the Foster fifth grade, I'm curious what change, I understand kindergarten's more of a moving target right now. Can you just talk a little bit more about what new information we got in the last couple of weeks that gave us comfort and what it would do to class size for next year?
Yeah, so I'll have to go back to my slides from the thirteenth. I know, Ayesha, if you have that.
So basically, the fourth grade has three sections. So when the fourth grade moves up to fifth grade, it'll just be maintained in those three sections, and the current fifth grade has four sections. So we don't need to have four sections in the fifth grade anymore because the current fourth grade has three sections, and we hadn't taken that into consideration.
Okay, so it was just, there's a million things going on, and it just was not captured the first time. Yep, okay. Makes sense.
Yes, and just to provide further clarification to that, so our current grade four has sixty-five students in three sections, so there's a class section of twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, and the assumption is that that cohort would roll up as three sections. Our current fifth grade at Foster has seventy-nine students, and that required four sections.
Yep, okay. That makes total sense. Okay, thank you. Second question, and I know this is moving as well, but where are we allowed to say where we are in terms of kindergarten at Foster, like what the class size that we were anticipating before we made the additional add and what the new class size we're anticipating with the additional add, understanding that it's still going to change in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, so our current kindergarten class, this current year at Foster, has fifty-nine students in it, and as of last count, and again, the enrollments are coming in daily, I think we had almost seventy-four kindergarten students already enrolled for Foster kindergarten, so that's a pretty significant jump from fifty-nine to seventy-four, and we still have two weeks left of registration, so we're very confident that we will need a fourth section there.
Okay.
So what's happening with that, Matt, is that when we look at the census data and we look at the number of people who attended our open house for kindergarten, we could basically look at, we can look at, we went back five years or six years and compared in terms of the census data and how many, how big the classes were for each class, and there was a significant bump between census data versus actual enrollment. With the combination of the census data and the number of kids, the number of parents who attended open house, and we got their addresses, and we were able to count how many people actually attended and were interested in Foster as a kindergarten, and we combined out of the census data, it pushed us way above the class size that we had, so it was only prudent to increase the number of kindergarten sections by that time.
Yep, that makes total sense. That's helpful. And then final question, can you just expand a little bit more on the three-point, the point two at PRS, Spanish teacher, what does that look like for the students there in terms of how that would work compared to the other elementary schools that have a full-time person in the latest proposal?
Yes, thank you. I had promised to loop back to that and didn't, so thank you for that clarification, Matt. So when we took a look at the number of sections of K-5 students at each building, and also considered both the pre-K classrooms that specialists visit and some of the specialized programs, Plymouth River has eighteen K-5 sections without some of the other factors like pre-K and specialized programming, and so the students at Plymouth River will receive a full complement of Spanish instruction for elementary, but we do not at Plymouth River currently have some of those additional duties that specialists have for either specialized programming, like our RISE program, or our integrated pre-K also has specials, and so where that is going to be at Foster next year, that will add to the caseload at Foster.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? It's kind of a follow-up to Matt's when you're talking about that potential added kindergarten section at Foster. Will that, the budgeted amount, excuse me, will that include a para, because I know typically the kindergarten classrooms have a para in each classroom? So will that be added in as well? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. So it's essentially two, a teacher and a para? Okay. Anyone else on the committee?
Or just this portion? I mean, we can always ask more questions as she goes through the additional. I think just a comment that, I mean, it's, I think we're all heartened to hear that the enrollment at the Foster for the kindergarten is going up. I know there's a lot of focus on enrollment and that enrollment has declined over the years. I think what people forget is that, you know, if enrollment drops ten, fifteen percent, it doesn't drop ten, fifteen percent in one grade or in one discipline, so you're spreading that out across thirteen grades, fourteen grades if you include preschool as well. So it's very hard to say, oh, if you drop fifteen percent, you should be able to cut fifteen percent of your courses, because the math doesn't work that way. But this is, I think, really encouraging that the kindergarten enrollment is so great. And I think that's the other thing we see a lot in municipalities is that the population ages swing, right? You have peaks and valleys, and hopefully we're on our way to another peaking.
Right. Thanks, Michelle. Right, continue on, and then we'll do more questions and comments from opportunities after that.
Well, as promised, one of the factors that will contribute to us being able to restore some of these positions would be a consideration of additional fees, and we don't take these lightly. We do understand that this will shift some of the burden to families, as we again did not take this lightly. I will say, however, I do meet regularly with the area South Shore superintendents, and every area district is also considering additional fees given the tight budget times. And so tonight, we will provide some context for what area districts currently have for their fees, but based on my conversations, nearly every area district is also considering fees, so I think we'll be kind of marching in lockstep with these increases. Some of the fees have already either been voted on or determined, so those would include the middle school and high school activity fees, we're holding those steady, the full-day kindergarten tuition, we are holding steady, the Kids in Action tuition fees, we already voted on those in December, Drivers Ed, we're doing an evaluation of the program, and we'll report that back at a future meeting, Chromebook repair, no changes proposed to that fee at this time. So really, the three fees we wanted to focus in on this evening are the parking fee, the athletics fee, and the transportation fee. And the maintenance fee was also previously voted upon last week at the one-sixteen meeting. And so in terms of athletics fees, last week, last Thursday, we did share some comparables for some of our other peers in the Patriots League, again, in conversations with these area districts, many of them are considering fees. One thing that makes an apples-to-apples comparison challenging is that different districts structure, their athletic fees differently. Some charge a single fee for all three sports, others have a tiered system. We in Hingham charged previously for just the first sport and then did not charge for the second and third sports. And so last week, we did present some potential for increasing athletic fees. So again, currently, our fee for the current school year is four twenty-five for the first sport, and we do not charge for sports two and three. If the student plays hockey, there's a differential there of six hundred dollars to account for things like ice time, and we currently have a cap of eleven hundred per family or thirteen hundred for hockey families. Our proposal for next year is to increase the single sport to four fifty, unless it is hockey or football, and that is a new add, the football, in which case the differential would be seven fifty. For sport two, we plan, would recommend that we charge two hundred dollars, and for sport three, an additional two hundred dollars with a twelve fifty cap per family and a fifteen fifty cap for hockey and football families. So this would, again, offset some of the contractual increases for coaches, ice time, and things of that nature. It's difficult to predict the impact of this and hard to project what this will mean, but we're estimating about thirty thousand, and we were really trying to get to a sweet spot. We didn't want the fees to preclude students from participating or trying something new. So many students have what they consider their main sport, but might try out track and field or another sport, or use it as a way to just participate and be part of the community, and so we're, again, trying to find that sweet spot of wanting to increase fees without accelerating too fast. And another, this is something that is premature to even be sharing, but did want to say that there are other potential efficiencies next year. So we do currently have a robust partnership with Hull for our gymnastics program. We have two potential partnerships that will need to go through the regular MIA process, school committee votes by both towns and so on, but there are conversations underway for a potential partnership for rugby with Norwell and swim with Cohasset. And so again, we, too premature, really factor that in to our costs here, but did want to share that as potential. And then next up, we have our proposed transportation fees, and so we historically have not charged at all for transportation, and we had some transportation about it for a number of reasons. Particularly at the middle school, we have some traffic concerns, and so that is one factor. Obviously, wanting to be green as well, encouraging students to take the bus. However, given the cuts that we need to consider in student-facing positions, we do feel that it may be time for us to consider a transportation fee, a bus fee. So Ayesha did a terrific job of looking at our comparable districts and surrounding towns to see what is currently being charged, and we did review this data last week. And our proposed transportation fee for next year would be three hundred and sixty dollars per student, roughly two dollars a day for a hundred and eighty days of transportation. We would propose a family cap of six twenty-five, and these fees will apply only to students in grades seven to twelve. We are not required as a district to provide transportation for students in grade seven and twelve, and we're similarly not required to provide transportation for K to six students who live less than two miles from school. And so we did find this year at Foster, for example, we did run buses, given some of the traffic patterns and constraints there, ran buses for families that live within that two miles, and many families did take advantage of that, so we are wondering if another So we are wondering if in other elementary schools that might be appealing. And so we will consider offering that option to elementary families within two miles. As with all of our fees, any student who's eligible, per the free and reduced lunch paperwork, bus transportation would be free and we would need the school committee to allow us to open an revolving account to track the fees.
Can I just ask a question to clarify on that? For the K to five students who are between the one to two miles, is that offering it in addition for students who are not already taking it or offering students who are in that range that they now can pay? Because I know there are some that are within that range who do get a bus, just if they have to cross the main streets.
Anybody who's within that range, we're not required to, 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 we are not required to transport them. So they would be part of the group of people who would pay the fee.
And it's sort of a similar question to that, too. Has there been any analysis? Are there kids that it's, they may be within that, that range, but it would be dangerous for them to walk to school?
In some cases, there may be, I think for the most part, in talking to Patrick about it, we looked at like, for example, certain neighborhoods, like, for example, Foster, where most of the kids in that neighborhood have walked in the past. But then just because of the one-off issue with construction, we made that change.
Right.
I, we look at also Main Street for, for South, where that may have, may be a consideration. And I guess the question is, would those families want to take the bus? Or would they want to drive? Or what would be the alternatives that they would want to do at that point in time?
I just wonder about students crossing Main Street, little ones, you know?
There is, for South, there is a crossing guard at Main Street and South Pleasant.
For, for East, there's not a crossing guard at three A, which is a much busier street than Main Street.
Right. And I guess my original question, too, just looking at the numbers, is there's really only two schools that are impacted by that at the elementary level, it's Foster and South, and thirty students, which really, you know, families have multiple students, could be just a handful of families. So I understand the, the reasoning behind it, but it just feels like it's a very small amount and for, you know, just those two schools to have it, that there might be a little pushback.
So this is not saying that only those two schools would have it. I, I think what we're seeing in, in, in that analysis, that we don't think that the other school districts would, would jump onto it. So that's kind of like an estimate. We'd have to do a survey and kind of move forward in terms of doing some research based on your response tonight. But we just, myself and Porrick actually just went through the different neighborhoods to see, for example, the PRS neighborhood. I don't think, we didn't think that, looking at that neighborhood within the two miles, that people would pay to get the bus. At least a majority of people wouldn't. So we just made a, a small estimate of what that would be or what it would look like.
Yeah, that helps. I was thinking at it more as those were the only people on that one to two mile range.
Yeah, it sounds like it's just an estimate.
Yeah.
And that we move forward with this, the first year will be kind of the, the test run. It's really a accurate number on.
You have a very imperfect crystal ball.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I was just thinking about with, with South, there is a stretch of Upper Main where the sidewalk ends on one side of the street and they have to cross and there's no crossing guard there. So that's looking at the, the safety thing. I mean, it's, I hate that we're having to consider this. I mean, it is a tax on families, but also looking at what we're, we would be saving by doing that. We have to do it, but I just want to make sure that we're not putting students in danger.
Sorry, do the students currently get, those students who live in these, on the dangerous sections, do they currently get picked up and there's no charge for that? So now there would be.
Yeah, because we're, like, where I live, it's just about exactly a mile that you have to cross Main Street. So you can walk with a crossing guard or take the bus.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's, there's certain ways that the parents want to maybe apply to kind of like a hardship in terms of, because they are in such a dangerous area for their kids to cross. Like I can, I can think of that one neighborhood where there is, there's, you can't cross Main Street there.
Right, yeah, and you're talking about kindergarteners.
Yeah.
I mean, just thinking of it, because it's where we live over by East, a significant chunk of the town is on the other side of three A, which is for a kid, an uncrossable street.
I guess, I mean, these are considerations that we can take back as well in terms of that. I don't, I, I, I would, if it is that we, because it's a, it's a test period, I would hate to like start carving out exceptions. And then it means that we are left with, we don't have the revenue at the end of the day in terms of what it is, right? So I just want to make sure that, you know, it's an estimate and it's a, we could use this year as a test to kind of, you know, look at what the options would be for that as well.
Yeah, yeah, I think I just, I think with many things, many things, this, this, and I don't want to speak on anyone's behalf, but at least for me, I always, I like to think of safety first.
Yeah.
When it comes to the kids.
Right.
Before anything.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine that parents would let kindergarteners just cross the streets on their own. Is that what, I can't imagine that parents would do that.
I know, but we don't know, and I mean, you don't know the circumstances, so.
So I'm saying we'll have, we have, like, every fee that we have, if people have financial difficulties in terms of paying the fees, we have a process for that, every single fee. So if that's the case, I'm sure we would be, I'm confident that if they have financial difficulties with any of the fees, we can look at that.
Yeah, and we are, and I guess we are, kind of talking about a small.
Yeah, yeah.
Group of students because it's, because we wouldn't be charging for. It's only that, then that one to two mile range.
Right.
Anyone else, just, anyone else have any questions on this portion? Matt, anyone?
On this, are we gonna, are we jumping back to, I have athletic questions, too, but do you want, I didn't know if we were waiting for everything. I have a transportation, yeah, I do have a transportation question, so I'll just ask that while I'm talking. It looks like we're going to be the highest fee compared to other towns. Is that, am I reading that correctly? And I'm just curious, the thought process, are we thinking everyone else is going to go up?
Yeah, like I said, I, I was in a meeting with the area superintendents just, actually both Thursday and Friday. And every other district is considering an increase as well. So I, I think we'll be in line with what other districts are, are considering. So if you take a look at, you know, Cohasset is currently at three fifty, Milton at three twenty-five, Duxbury at three hundred. If everyone is, is increasing, I think we, the proposed fee will likely be in line.
I mean, my one thought is it's a big step from, you know, if, if they're used to paying three twenty-five and they pay three sixty, that's a thirty-five dollar. And I understand we need the money, but this is going from zero to, to three sixty, so I just call that out.
No, agreed, agreed.
Yeah, I think to Carrie's point, I mean, it's, we need to do something to save these positions and bring them, keep them in the budget, but this is, this is tough. I mean, my tough thing with it is just from an equitable standpoint, this is like, everything is going on the high school, middle school and high school, right? They've got the activity fee, got the athletic fee, they've got now mostly the transportation fee.
Yeah.
So. I don't have a solution for that. I'm just pointing it out.
I, I don't have a solution. It's definitely hard.
Yeah.
I feel like we've been talking about the potential for a bus fee for, gosh, maybe three years. We're talking about it as a potential, we're talking about the override, kind of feel like, at least from my perspective, that we're holding off as long as we possibly could with something like this. But I do think that it, I, I, it could be a shock to some, to some families. But, you know, to your point, Michelle, it's weighing pros and the cons. And anyone has any more questions on this portion, otherwise I think we're finished.
We have one more fee to go. All three. So in addition, oh, so just, Ayesha, if you want to talk a little bit about the cost of implementation of the transportation fee?
Yes, so in terms of the transportation fee, for, in terms of the first year, one of the things that we, one, some of the things that we did as well is that we went back to look at other school districts to see exactly how they implemented the fee. And as part of doing that, there's usually like a registration and people get their bus cards. And in terms of that, we had to set up the website, that wouldn't be an additional cost. But we would have to install some kind of card readers on the buses and to get cards for everyone that would be taking the bus as well. So these are some of the costs that we would have to put in place as far as the first year of it. One of the districts, for example, Duxbury, one of the things they did is that the people could go onto Aspen and register for the buses. We kind of like the way they had it set up in terms of people just being able to go into Aspen and register. And we could get a list of all the people who registered for their transportation. And that would be a bit of a cost in terms of getting Aspen to do that registration, to get that registration process up and running as well. So we're looking at an estimate of about, in terms of that, about twenty thousand for the first year in terms of what a cost will be. And that will just reduce some of the revenue that we would be collecting as well.
And again, the net, net of, as, as proposed, would be about two fifty.
I just have a quick question on compliance in terms of like for the bus driver. I just imagining kids, you know, they don't have a thing, but they try to get on their friend's bus. I mean, for all these other towns have dealt with it. Is it, do we have any idea how smooth it is? I see like it could be, I'm not arguing against it, this is a curious, curiosity question.
Right, so like even like in terms of going through the various websites, you can see like the, the rule of the road, so to speak, on the websites where, you know, whatever bus you, you're, I mean, even now, we tell kids that, right? Whatever bus you're assigned to is the bus you should go on. Because there, I mean, in a lot of our other neighborhood, neighboring districts, it's actually, it's not even our own in-town buses, but it may be a first-student bus that the kids are, are driving upon. So there are strict deadlines in terms of when registration has to happen so that they can inform the contractor of the number of buses needed. And the rules of the road in terms of, I can definitely imagine that for the first year, there may be some ups and downs in terms of kids getting used to the whole new policy and the rules of the road and everything else. But I think similar to what most of our other neighboring towns are doing, I think kids will eventually learn what needs, what needs to be done. For example, there are suggestions on the websites, keep your bus pass on your backpack so that you can easily swipe in and there are suggestions like that on there so that kids, hopefully, they will leave their backpack at home. So, so if they do come on, they'll have the, the card on as well, right? So there may be bumps along the way, Mr. Cosman, but I think in terms of overall, by, hopefully by the end of the first year, most of the kids will get a hang of what the rules of the road are.
Makes sense.
And all the student groups will now be making those little luggage tags to hold the bus cards with an H on the other side, right?
Yep, stay tuned for homecoming. I had a question on, did you consider the possibility of an increase in people not taking the bus? And then potentially reducing any routes, bus routes, and how that could factor into it?
Yeah, so I think in terms of, it all depends on how things, things fall out, like with registrations. And if it is that we find that, for example, we don't have to use as many buses anymore, that could also be another way to curtail costs.
Yeah.
In the first year, it might not be as, as easy to do it. But in the next year, we're going out to lease on the buses so it can inform some of the decisions that we make in the next year in terms of how many buses we lease. If it is that families are not paying the fee and don't want to be part of that program, then we, in, in twenty twenty-seven, it could definitely be another way to cut costs as well.
So next up, we also considered parking fees. And so we do currently have fees for the close and far lots at Hangham High. So Ayesha similarly did some benchmarking to area towns to see what other towns are charging. And sorry, might go back. And so, Ayesha, you want to share your proposal?
Yeah, so I think Mr. Buckley was able to help us find some of that information. But I think in terms of that information as well, similar to what Mrs. Roberts said, a lot of those fees are going up. So I know that it does look much higher than in, than other neighborhood, neighboring towns. But I think this is a one fee that we're confident that we'll probably have hundred percent collection on, unlike the others, where it's still kind of challenging in terms of being able to budget those amounts.
Can you just remind me, or us, what, what do we charge today?
So we charge eighty dollars for the close lot right now and twenty dollars for the far lot.
And roughly how many students is that for the close lot? It's not that many, right?
For the close lot, it is seventy-nine. Let me just go back to that slide again. Seventy-nine spots for the close lot and for the far lot is two hundred and eighty-two.
And how much additional revenue would this generate?
Fifty-three thousand. And part of what we use this for, as well as for, for painting and its removal. So there will be, so I put in about forty-one thousand in terms of how much we would net on it just because there will be some costs in terms of maintaining the parking lots as well.
Are other towns, so were the, not one other town charges a difference between close and far? Is our far parking, I mean, our far parking is not that much further away? Like, why?
Pretty far away.
When it's really rainy out.
Ask the students that.
But I mean, are the other towns, like, what is the difference between close, are there not close and far in other towns or what? I just, it's odd to me that, I mean, it's a pretty big differential, again, there's zero differential in any other town.
Yeah, I'm thinking of, I can think of Duxbury, I don't think they, Silver Lake doesn't, Waymouth.
So maybe they don't have a close and far.
They have more land, I think.
There's a reason we have a student on the, on the board tonight, so what do you think, Slater?
Oh, I think students will absolutely pay for that regardless of the price. I don't think you should charge more for far lot or like it, close lot should definitely be more because you are entering a lottery for it and choosing the, like, accepting that there might be a higher cost to get a better spot. I know there are students who are like reselling their closed parking spots.
They are not allowed to do, correct?
So we can push the black market, right?
I think you just, yeah, that, this looks great.
Do we direct all conversations about this to Slater for your family? Oh, Jaclyn? Sure.
Jaclyn, um, Association President, I actually had a question for Slater. Do you think a lot of students carpool?
No, definitely not. I think there is an amount who do, but a lot of kids like want to drive themselves.
Um, I'm excited to have a question for your listeners out. Why is the, what's a close lot fee not equal or greater than the bus fee? Considering we're kind of consider ourselves to be a sustainable district typically that we want to consider.
By public transit.
That's a great question, Jaclyn. We did, did consider that. The one thing I will say is we, in looking at fees, were comfortable being the highest, but we weren't comfortable being higher by a factor of two or five or ten. And so if we increased that parking fee to be as high as the bus, we would be more by factors instead of being, you know, within the range of, of benchmark towns. So, but we did consider the environmental impact. But again, trying not to be too much of an outlier, but again, do appreciate the comment about green values, so.
Do you want to continue on with the, with the presentation? I also want to, it's a public opportunity to ask questions, but I think we'll do that at the end.
Yeah, truly, the, the, all that's remaining in the presentation, again, the full-day K tuition on the next slide is something that you already voted on, but we did want to just include that in there. And then finally, the only And then finally, um, the only kind of closing comments that I have are any additional um potential budget variables. That might be coming, so our next um presentations, we have a capital presentation um coming up. But our next presentation of this um information will be on February fourth. And as we did this evening, we will be making adjustments right up until um six thirty on um February fourth. And the new information that might come in will include any retirements, any leaves, or any other um updates to our budget. Um, I mentioned that our kindergarten registration packets are due on, is it February fourteenth or seventeenth?
It's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth, um, so we'll continue to monitor those enrollment numbers. And then we always have a hard time predicting um the influx of students into grade one. So some students might attend private K or families might be moving into town. So that's um uh another variable too that we'll continue to refine right up until um that February fourth presentation. Uh, we continue to monitor out of district tuitions, um specialized services, um which are on the IEP grid as. Um, a new um IEP meetings are held, uh transportation. And then we had mentioned at a previous meeting that we are exploring uh a partnership with SSCC, the South Shore Educational Collaborative. On a potential therapeutic program here in district, and so if we have um more information on that, we'll add that to our calculations. And then finally, again, the January twenty ninth um is our capital outlay meeting, um so that's uh Wednesday of this week. And then on February fourth is the joint budget meeting for the select board advisory committee and school committee. Where where we'll present our most up-to-date um presentation. And so now we can revisit um the fee conversation and any other questions that you might have.
I just want to um just quickly say that appreciate, we had a, we all had a very robust conversation at our last meeting about the fees. Um, so appreciate it going back, kind of going back to the drawing board and coming up with some um additional options. And I'm taking feedback that we had into consideration. Um, and then I might not say any more questions or comments on the committee. Alright, does anyone in, um, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
One second, Matt has a question.
Sorry, I have two, uh, well, I have one on full-day kindergarten really quickly. For some reason, I have my head that only like five or six other districts charge full-day kindergarten or or more charging now. I mean, see, there's more on here.
On the South Shore, five or six on the South Shore.
Now sure, this is, okay, and this is just, this is, okay, so it's it's way more than five, okay, great.
I think there's only twenty, I think there's only twenty across in the state.
Yeah.
That charge, but I was gonna call it out.
Okay, thank you. And then I do have several athletics questions. Athletic fee questions. So the first is football, uh, so we we suggested adding that. I I'm not sure if it said on that other grid, is, I'm assuming that many other towns do that or some other towns do that. And um, can you just talk a little bit about the rationale there with hockey? It's like ice, you know, ice costs more money and. That's that's, it's always been historically, I think, the rationale. Um, so can you just talk a little bit more about? What went into adding football?
Yes, so other districts do charge for football, and in my conversation with the area superintendents, those that currently don't. Will likely be adding it for next year, um, so we would not be an outlier in having hockey and football.
And what, just what is the rationale? Like, again, hockey makes sense to me from a, I'm not against it, I'm just against curiosity, like. Cause there's not, I don't think, additional fees associated with football, or are there?
Right, so in terms of football, when you look at the coaching staff. It's a much bigger coaching staff than the sports. Um, that's one area um in terms of.
The full-time trainer that is there as well.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, second question I had was related to the family cap. And um. Did we give thought to increasing it even more? It's, so we're we're kind, we're envisioning a kind of, I don't know, for anybody that plays more than one sport. I don't know what that is, thirty-three percent increase or something like that, or you know, fifty percent increase or then a hundred percent increase if you play three sports. But the family cap only jumps ten percent or so. Can you just talk a little bit about the thought process?
Right, so what what we did for the um, the family cap is that we um. We went back a few years as well to look at the data. And for example, in twenty four, we only had about maybe in total five families. Who paid the family cap. Um, most families were either two-family families who paid the whole thing. Or one family, or one kid, let me put it differently, one individual family or two, one individual or two individuals. Um, this only applies for three individuals, and if it is that the 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 three individuals are um paying. Are are single, single-sport families, um, they're only getting a hundred dollar discount.
Sorry, maybe I'm not fine. When you're saying, what do you mean by individ, when you're saying individuals? So I guess right now, you basically would have to have three kids in the school s- school system. To be eligible and have them all play sports and you'd get a small savings.
Exactly.
Right, whereas now, um, it changes pretty significantly, especially if you have. So I'll just use myself as an example. I'll have a ninth and tenth grader next year who likely are both going to play three sports. Um, we're leaving, and I think you're gonna have a fair, I don't know, a decent amount, what is it, forty percent? Forty percent play three, something like that, I think was the data. So we're leaving more money on the table there. So, so. I think we're gonna have a lot more people that are gonna hit the family gap, I guess, is what I'm saying with the the three and. You know, I don't know, is there an argument that could be even higher?
Right.
You're still getting a savings.
Right, so I think that in terms of what what we were envisioning for that one is that, so uh two, most families were only had. One individual, one kid, right? That was by far the maximum number of um situations. Where there was only one kid who paid the full amount. Um, and in some cases, there were two, like for example, like you and I, we'll have two kids in in high school next year. So we will pay um, that will pay for the two sports, we'll pay nine hundred dollars if they are one-sport kids. If they are, it'll be four fifty plus four fifty for each kid. Plus, if they are three-sport kids, we'll be paying an additional um four hundred dollars. Um, who who um.
You took the cap.
So you only hit the cap with three kids.
No, two, two.
With three kids, with three kids.
Oh, the family cap, the rule is you have to have three kids in this, okay.
It's three kids.
Yeah, okay, uh, got it.
Well, wouldn't it depend on if they play all three sports?
Well, even more, even so, then like, in some ways, you're, uh, sorry, can you explain that more?
So 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 just to, just to make sure I'm clarifying, right? So in terms of one sport, it would be four fifty for the first, two hundred, two hundred. If it is that you have two kids, it would be the same thing. Um, it'll be four fifty, four fifty for each kid, right? And then it'll be the two hundred who sport per kid. Right?
But are you eligible for, so again, use my example, I just want to make them understanding it. If I have both kids, two kids playing three sports each, am I, I'm not eligible for the family cap because I don't have three kids?
Exactly, exactly. And in the case of the family cap, um, the way we envision that as well. Is that you still have to pay for the additional sports as well.
Not sure that that was our intention in that conversation.
Okay, alright, so we can, we can go back.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we can, I'm not sure I fully understand, but.
If I had two, two kids who play three sports.
So if so for the, but for right now, the way it is right now, in terms of looking at all the data. Um, and I don't know if Jim is on as well, he can confirm that with me as well too. But the way it works right now, the family cap only works where there are three kids in the family.
Like, it's just because the system's changing now, like right now, you have to have three to hit the family cap. It's some math, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, that, I guess that was my point. I think the fam, I think there is room. I mean, if we're saying the rule is that you have to have three kids to hit the family cap, that's different than. Um, it's not the rule, it's just that's sort of why it is. Sorry, that's just the way it is right now based on the system what we set up, but.
Right, so so the way I kind of looked at it was, um, if you look at, if if it is that um. That that a family had three kids.
Three kids discount.
Three kids and they only paid one spot, then it would be four fifty times three and they would get a discount for the twelve fifty. And if it is that they had two or three sports, then that would be different in terms of how that would be capped.
So I think we need to articulate that, that was, um, I think that's a shared understanding.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I guess my, I, 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 I'm not sure I'm completely following, but I do think. It sounds like maybe what you're suggesting is what I was suggesting, which is, I think we can get more money from. I don't think the family cap should be as low as it is, which it sounds like it's not, because.
Right, it's not.
You have three kids in this.
Only for for one, one-sport kid.
So it sounds like we need more clarification on that, on that family cap.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I agree with that, it probably, it could probably go up.
Yep.
So then the final question I had just, um, and again, I I think this is a good, a a good idea. Um, but I do think it's going to be harder to collect, um, or harder to sort of. Monitor it all, right? Right now, you just gotta sign up at the beginning of the year. I think most kids probably know they're gonna do a sport slash make a team, but now we're gonna have, you know, you probably don't know. If you're gonna play one, two, or three at the very start of the year. So it's just gonna be much more monitoring, I think, throughout. Or how, have we thought through like how that's gonna work? I don't think you can chart, like you can't charge at the beginning of the year.
Right, so the way it works now, Matt, is that it's a spring, there's a spring registration, winter registration. And sorry, fall, spring, uh, fall, fall, winter, and spring registrations. And then um in terms of that, so even in terms of right now, in terms of collections that I'm looking at. Um, you will see, for example, in the um, in the fall time. Um, those people who are soccer or other volleyball, other players for for the fall of football, they would sign up. Then at the wintertime, when when a family, for example, um decides that they're gonna play hockey. If they played a sport in the, in the, in the fall, you would see the differential of the two hundred dollar addition being added. So I think it's something that um that the department is.
And to Slater's earlier point, I think parking and athletics are the two fees that we can collect with confidence. Um, because there's high motivation to participate, so.
And Mrs. Holler is like pretty good in terms of, if you don't pay, you don't pay. I mean, unless you have a financial issue. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that Aspen um registration that you're talking about would be helpful.
Yes.
Oh, wait, that was for the bus, no, fine.
Well, we, we actually, the the, um, the middle school and high school um principals have actually started collecting um and update. Well, the middle school has been doing it for a few years now in terms of putting the data for activity fees in Aspen.
Okay.
And we've um been able to figure out a way to have this invisible to parents as well. So it's something we can do for athletics too, if they need it too as well.
Thank you, Ayesha. Great, um, and open it up to the public, just a reminder, um, you come up just to give your name and address.
Hello, um, my name is Maria Zaid and I live at two eighty-seven C Rockland Street. Um, and I have a question and a comment. Um, my question is about the elementary bus fees, the K to six. Do you know within each district what percentage of ridership lives within that one to two mile? And would be subject to those fees?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, um, and then my comment is that. I have a kindergartner and a third grader at East and I will happily pay whatever fee um to save the student-facing positions. But I'm afraid that this proposal will elicit backlash from the community. So I looked it up and I live one point eight miles from East, very close to you actually.
Yeah.
And my adorable five-year-old under this presentation has to, I'm just nervous, I'm not emotional. Has to walk down our street, up Kilby, cross train tracks, cross three A at an intersection deemed so dangerous. That cars are no longer allowed to cross after multi-year traffic study, continue on, and then she gets to the crossing guard. Where she gets to cross, and she has to do that twice a day with my son, who's probably gonna be like playing Pokemon in his head. Um, and there are a lot of kids in my neighborhood, so I think. That, I think what seems more, so telling me through the fee that. Having her take a bus to avoid that is luxurious, feels wrong. Um, so I wonder if there's another way to structure the fee, because I get that we need the money, I totally do. Um, is it a lower fee that applies to everybody? Um, just what is the other option? Because I think, given that situation, oh, like my parent, husband and I both work. We're not gonna be walking into school, it's forty-one minutes to walk, people are gonna opt out and you're not gonna get. The results that you were looking for, and also cars can't cross that intersection anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, just an idea I'm just throwing out there, if that's okay? Um, is it possible if we could potentially address, this goes forward, if we could address it? Through policy in terms of a policy for safety, return in regards to the bus fee?
I think that makes.
I think we decide now, just an idea, maybe we could, for the families that we could, that are concerned about. Those kindergartners, um, safety crossing the road, because I think that is, for me, it's a big concern.
Yeah, I I'm not comfortable just seeing how it goes for a year with little kids. Um, but yeah, so I I think maybe through policy or it's procedure too, and it's it's a small number of people that are affected by this too. Um, and like, I'm comfortable voting on the fee, but that is a big concern.
Yeah, can someone, I I'm confused, I'm getting, I'm sure I'm just being dense, but I don't really understand, so like. Compared to what happens today, what, what by instituting this fee, I have the same concerns, just to be clear. Uh, I guess what I'm confused about is we're instituting a fee and why that changes all the procedures and adds more safety issues. Can someone, like I said, I'm sure I'm just being stupid, but.
No, I had the same question, but I.
I don't get what the difference is.
I had the same, I had the same confusion because my kids were walkers. Um, but you, I think right now the policy is that if you live within two miles. And are deemed in a dangerous walking neighborhood, you do get transportation provided at no cost today. So now, using Ms. Zaid's example, her children are entitled to transportation with no fee currently. And next year, they would have to pay.
But it, but is there the same key, safety concern for her today? Again, is the fee driving the, a change in what the, or? Do we have a separate safety issue where her kids are walking across?
No, I think the issue is now you're requiring people to pay for something and maybe some people won't be able to pay that fee. And now will make the decision to have their child be.
Because, because remember that the additional children who are beyond two miles, K through six. Won't be charged because we're required to transport them.
I mean, one way.
So we're, we're literally saying you have to, if you, you're being penalized for almost. Living within that one to two mile range.
Like my, my neighborhood, Matt, is.
If you're between ages eight through six.
The elementary students in our neighborhood, we are less than a mile. However, there's no sidewalk and then you have to cross Main Street, where there is a crossing guard. But um you have to cross Main Street in Cushing, and I know for a lot of the families with really little kids. Just because there's no sidewalk on that stretch and it's very busy that they opt to take the bus, which is provided, just for safety reasons. But now, we're within that range, but then you would have to pay to take that bus, which for most of those families. You know, it's not feasible for them to have their kids walk.
I mean, maybe one way to think about it is, look at the, instead of the driving distance being two miles, look at the safe walking distance has to be. Cause I know you would have to walk through the train station to go to this crossing at Summer Street, which would definitely put you above two miles.
Yeah, I I I kind of equivalent to if we had charged the foster families this year for that bus.
Can we just not charge for elementary school? I mean, we're assuming thirty people here, like.
Yeah, I think that's what, I think that's what we're trying, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, I feel like it's too young and it's too concerning with the safety.
Yeah.
And it doesn't really impact, I mean, thirty people is in the assumption for, or even less dollars, because it's eighty percent of that, so.
So yeah, we have to just put the numbers over and see where we land in terms of that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be much more comfortable if it didn't include the K to five.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the next thing I'm worried about is that if we go through the neighborhoods for high school and middle school and then the dangerous sports as well. We may be canceling that as well. High school and middle school and then the dangerous sports as well, maybe canceling that as well too.
I think we're just talking about the elementary, I think we're just talking about the elementary. Alright, anyone else in the audience? Jacqueline?
Jacqueline Buprey, um, uh, Hingham Education Association President, just going to point out one more time that we said there's like eighty close lot spots. And if they paid another hundred and fifty dollars more to be on par with bus fee, that would cover all thirty of those. Just saying.
I think there is a point once you start charging too much that comes unjustifiable. I don't think charging more than that proposed increases, just in my own, in my opinion, even if it generates more revenue. And like sometimes it would encourage like carpooling, but on the other hand, it's just. There's a lot of parents can't drive their kids and that's how you avoid the cost, that's how I avoid the cost. My mom drives me every morning, I'm not walking the ten like mile and a half I have to walk. Because it's snowing out and the sidewalks aren't plowed like, uh, and I don't want to pay first of all already. And I can't imagine a lot of kids who like live on Luzzell who don't have sidewalks to walk on. And I'd just be wary of that.
Is it possible that it was? Lower because there are only a limited amount of spots, like not every kid who wants to drive to school can. At least, I'm guessing it's the juniors, or because I I'm just remembering there was talk about. Not everyone can get a spot at high school.
But from from my understand, from my discussions with um, the admin assistants when in a part of preparing this. Uh, presentation, um, I was told that lots just filled up today. Or like not just today, but like last week, you just sold the last, the last spot, it just filled up at that time. So given that, um, I don't think it was a case of like a fire sale that once, you know. All the lots were sold immediately. So I'm thinking that maybe kids are getting their licenses and they're hopping on as that happens.
And we've talked several times and I know it's come up in other groups too about incentivizing the kids to carpool, so. You know, and that's probably more of a student focused activity, but maybe some other clubs or groups could. Some incentives for close lot spot if you have more than two people on the car and that type of thing.
Right, I mean, the the only thing about that is that, I mean, just great, carpooling, we love that, right? Um, that sometimes the kids get in their licenses, sometimes there are restrictions on the timing of when they can do that. Based on, you know, the the rules around. Getting the license as well and, you know, how long you have to take before you can only travel with family, et cetera.
Okay. How would we, so were we planning on voting on these? Or?
I'm wondering about Tim's suggestion of maybe separating out the elementary. Or someone suggested separating out elementary and.
It was a great idea.
But uh, uh, solidifying our thinking around secondary would help us um, make make better. Protect pro- projection, so um, we could separate out the elementary piece of maybe, I'm just a suggestion. But only on the secondary transportation fee table, the elementary and maybe we could come back with a different proposal on that. Just a suggestion. That works.
And I was just joking, it was Matt's idea. I don't want to steal credit.
And then for the athletic fee as well, are you envisioning that the fee would be, um, so right now, the way. I looked at it, it was, um. For two, for one family, you pay four fifty, you pay for one individual, you pay four fifty, two hundred and two hundred for three, for three sports. For a second kid, you just multiply by two. For a third kid, um, we can keep the cap for one spot and add on. And add on maybe four hundred. Who, if the two kids pay, they pay four sports, or maybe reduce the two hundred to one fifty. If it is a three, a a three, a three, um, fam- a three or above family, I just add on one fifty instead of two hundred. So the savings is into in terms of how much you add on for the two or three sports.
I think we might need to simplify, I think that, I think that's a bit, um, that that's the same shared understanding, but I would love feedback though. Just where the majority of the students are single students, I didn't really hear from the committee feedback on. The four fifty, two hundred, two hundred for a student, if we're kind of in line with. The school committee's thinking and then it sounds like what we need to go back to the drawing board on is the family cap and. Um, I think having a a simpler uh, structure for that. I agree, I mean, I think I'm comfortable with these numbers per sport, it's when you get into the. Two students, suddenly they're paying more than a family with three students, students, um, just a clarification. I agree, I'm comfortable with this too, I just want, would want to define the family cap.
Alright, so it sounds like we're going to vote on. Transportation for secondary.
I will make a motion um, to approve the suggested transportation rates for the secondary level for this school year.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, so uh, roll call vote, uh, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well.
Thank you, and that will help us um, kind of refine our our projections and solidify some of the proposed, um.
And would you vote for athletics for the singles, for the individual?
I am not comfortable doing that just because these slides are going to be out there now. And somebody looking at that is not going to understand what we just discussed. So I think that's the one thing, I mean, I'm okay with the numbers, but until we have something that. Really shows what we're voting on, I'm not comfortable voting, I don't know where other people are.
No, I think if I think if that per family cap changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. So we'll hold off on that. In the parking fee, so.
And a motion for the parking fee?
I will make a motion to increase the parking fee for close lot to two twenty five and. For a lot to one twenty five for fiscal year twenty six.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm I as well. Good.
Thank you.
So. Moving on, just to get my bearings here, uh, so we're going to move on to new business. Under new business, go ahead, Michelle.
Sorry, can I propose for under new business that, like, you know, we have a couple of teachers here who are here to um, provide some field trip. Um, information, we both kind of move that up similar agenda and do those first.
So move seven point five.
And and seven.
And seven point four. Alright, so do seven point, everyone's, the committee's okay, we're moving, seven point four and seven point five, so. Seven point four is to review a proposed student trip for Hingham High Robotics Team to attend a competition in Rhode Island and act as appropriate.
Paula Flanagan, excuse me, a little bit of a sore throat. Um, Paula Flanagan, Hingham High School Chemistry Teacher and Head Coach for the past ten years. Of Hingham High Hammerheads Robotics Team. Uh, we compete in the first robotics competition, uh, we have two district events each year. And um, they're in New England. And they have reduced the venues in the past few years. For example, we used to be able to compete at Bridgewater, either at Bridgewater Random High School or. Bridgewater State University, um, they've taken that venue away, so there is no South Shore District Competition anymore. Um, and so it kind of limits where we can go and when we can go. So, um, as I said, we we compete in two competitions in New England. So this year, uh, our first competition is at URI. And that would be um, on Friday, March fourteenth and Saturday, March fifteenth. Um, the second competition is the week following and it's a Saturday, Sunday competition, so that would be at WPI. The following Saturday and Sunday. Um, most of the competitions are Saturday, Sunday events, so it doesn't affect a field trip. Um, because we just take the kids there on Saturday, they compete, go home, take them back on Sunday, they compete and go home. But for the URI event, it will start um, early on Friday morning, so that would require us to take. The team um, on a bus down to URI Friday morning, compete Friday, we would be bringing them back home Friday evening. Um, the competition's on Friday, usually go till about seven P M, so the kids are getting back a little after like eight, eight thirty P M. And then early Sunday morning, uh, Saturday morning rather, being going back to URI for the second day of competitions. Um, and the playoffs, if we make playoffs on Sunday afternoon, so uh, Saturday afternoon rather. So, um, that was um, what we would need to field trip approve approval for that day.
Sounds like.
Friday the fourteenth.
Sounds like a great time and good luck.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone in the committee have any questions?
What do you mean, if you make it?
Sounds good, thank you very much.
This may, sorry, this may, actually, this may be a question for you, um, Ms. Roberts. In this form, we have that no field trips for sophomores in the month of March, and so I'm assuming there may be sophomores.
There are, there are very few, um, I think I can only think of. Two sophomores on the team, it is not during an MCAS week though. And I think that was the concern about March field trips for sophomores.
I think maybe we just need to change the form, because I think there's some other things that say like none in May or June and sometimes somebody did.
Right.
Something against.
Right, so for the tenth graders, it was a concern that it would be during a week of MCAS and it's not.
Maybe less of a concern.
Alright, thank you very much, alright, so um, motion?
I will make a motion to approve the robotics trip to University of Rhode Island on March fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
On the second. Any discussion? Alright, roll call vote, um, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I'm an S, and I am an I as well, that is a tongue twister. Alright, good luck, alright, so. Good luck, alright, moving on to seven point five, which is to. Review a proposed trip to Europe for high school students in April of twenty twenty six and act as appropriate.
And I believe we also have Cara Roth online, if you'd like to unmute her as well in case she wants to contribute to the conversation.
Yes, hi, I'm Catherine Black, social studies teacher at the high school, my colleagues Cara Roth and Rose Pupuga, I believe are joining us on on Zoom as well. So any questions that I can't answer, I'm sure they could, so we are proposing a trip for April of twenty twenty six. Uh, bringing students starting in Amsterdam, traveling down to Brussels and then um, ending once again in Paris. Um, very much looking forward to it, the, we're hopefully looking forward to it, the uh, the trip in Amsterdam would include visit to the Anne Frank House. And we know that that uh, reading of that is is required still for all eighth graders, so um, that would. Tie our curriculum in together quite well and um, you can of course read our application, if there's any questions that we can answer about that, we'd be happy to.
Thank you very much, sounds like a great trip. Does anyone have any questions?
Of Cara Roth, as her hand.
Oh, Cara? Hold on a second, I think we just need to unmute you.
Hi, thank you, yeah, I couldn't unmute or un- or turn my video on, I just wanted to just uh, help answer any questions of Catherine. We have multiple chaperones, you'd enough to field all the questions, that's all.
Great, thank you, Cara. Doesn't look like we have any questions, but.
My question is, do you need more chaperones?
We are hoping that the more kids that sign up, the more adults we'll need, so we'll hopefully come to you.
Yeah, we think it's a really great um, offering, you know, visiting three countries with lots of significant sites, so we um, hope we will have good involvement.
We're thinking we will. Yeah.
Looks like a great trip.
I want some video of the robotics team, but I want some food selfies.
It's a chocolate making workshop, so.
That is true, Brussels, Brussels stuff includes a chocolate making workshop, so yeah, plenty of Instagrammable activities there.
Alright, with that, I think we're ready to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the trip to Amsterdam, Brussels Empires in April of twenty twenty six.
A second? Any discussion? Alright, roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
And I am an I as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we will move back to item. Seven point one, which is to review proposed warrant articles for the twenty twenty five town meeting and act as appropriate.
The principals as well. Into the principals before, because we have to be here anyhow.
So alright, so we're going to do another. Hold on to seven point one, so we're going to go to. Seven point three, correct, which is to receive an update on the grade six through twelve program of studies and act as appropriate.
Alright, so I'm going to start us off with some question, some changes that we made throughout the program of studies document. And then Derek and John will follow up with specific changes for the high school and the middle school. The biggest changes that we're proposing have to do with the way that we describe our course designations. Uh, as part of this process, the department directors and the principals and I looked at documentation from other districts. We looked at how other districts described their courses. I listed all the schools that we looked at, it was, we got a nice big pile of printouts in my office. And we found that some of the language that we use is. Very unique to Hingham, particularly the the designation of standard and upper standard. And we felt like the way that they're described now, they're inherently comparative, right? One of them is obviously better than the other one and that's not necessarily true, even though the language gives us that impression. Um, so our proposal is that we rename what we currently call level three or upper standard to be college prep one. Again, this is common practice in most districts. Rename our level four standard courses to be college prep two. I like this change in particular because it reflects the fact that the students in those standard level courses are in fact ready for college. By the time they graduate, I asked Heather Rodriguez, the head of counseling, to pull some data for me on. What students in that class have done in the past post-graduation. And last year, out of fifteen graduates who fell into that category, ten of them were admitted to college or university. Some of them chose not to attend, but they were ready for it. Um, so we felt like college prep really more accurately describes what that set of courses is about. On page eight in the program of studies, we also added a more detailed description of those course designations. To emphasize the nature of each level, so you'll see descriptions of methods of instruction. Amounts of scaffolding and support that students can expect and the amount of work that we expect students will be doing outside of class. Again, through the document, I made some changes throughout. That reflect those changes, so anything that was advanced, we now call honors, anything that was upper standard, college prep one, standard, college prep two. Throughout the document, I tried to replace the term level with placement or course. To again, avoid that inherent comparison that might exist between those groups. Um, I made some changes to make the language a little bit more formal. And then for the dual enrollment courses, we removed the words dual enrollment from the title of the course. Because we found that for some colleges. If a student took the dual enrollment course but didn't opt in for the dual enrollment credit, it caused confusion with their college transcript. So instead, we just added a descriptor to the course description that says, this course is available for dual enrollment credits from whichever institution is going to grant them. And that is all I have to say.
I will just add, I wanted to thank Erica and John and Derek and the directors um, for really taking a deeper dive into this. Um, I think when a new student comes into Hingham High and looks at our program of studies. Our language is so wildly different from our benchmark communities, um, that this way of anyone coming in. Um, to look at our program of studies, the language will be um, familiar and very much in line uh, with our our benchmark. Here, so again, they took a deep dive and I appreciate all of their um, uh, work on that.
I think Derek can tell us a little bit more about the changes for the middle school.
Sure. Happily, how are you? Good to be here this evening, thanks for bumping us up, Aisha, again, we appreciate that. Erica did hit the highlights, but there are a couple of uh, changes that are are worth pointing out at the middle school level. Um, you can see that we reworked the statement about homework at the middle school, uh, homework is always a. A hotly discussed topic when you, when it comes to middle school. We tightened up some of the timing of the amount of homework that should be expected per major subject area. Moved it to about fifteen to twenty minutes per evening with an hour to an hour and a half total per evening. But I think most importantly is really the clarification of the language in that statement that. If a parent is watching their middle schooler um, work with with concerted effort for a significant amount of. that if a parent is watching their middle schooler work with concerted effort for a significant amount of time, they are empowered to stop that student from working and just let the teacher know. That's always been our practice, but not one that is often taken advantage of by parents. The last thing we want is for a youngster to sit at the kitchen table for hours on end, laboring over an assignment when clearly they've hit the point of having done all they can. So just to point out that that is within the caregiver's rights to let us know that it is time to put the pen down and move on to dinner. So I want to make sure that that is pointed out. Couple of other language changes that you'll see in there. We've looked at, again, the opportunities to combine grade levels where necessary due to changes in enrollment patterns. Our drama seven and our drama eight courses, we're adding in language that opens the door for that. If we have smaller cohorts who want to take drama, you need to have an adequate number of students in a drama class to make it really a meaningful and successful experience. So we leave ourselves that opportunity if we need to do that for those classes to run and be the best that they can be. We have changed our language when it comes to the frequency of physical education. Previously, it stated that grade six students would take physical education once per cycle. We've added the phrase at least because we've watched these enrollment patterns change and our enrollment dropping. And we may have the opportunity in the future to increase the frequency of special of physical education for our sixth grade students to twice per cycle, similar to the seventh and eighth graders. That remains to be seen based on how many students we're looking at next year and how we can adjust the overall master schedule. But I think we'd all agree that more physical activity is better for our middle schoolers than less. So if we can add another block of phys ed to our kids' schedule, that would be great for all involved. And finally, you'll notice that we are stepping away from leveled instruction for grade seven social studies next year. We are looking at a heterogeneous model rather than the leveled instruction that we have previously engaged in. Reasons for that being multiple. One, it is the second part of a two-part course really that has begun in grade six. Part one is grade six, part two is grade seven. Grade six is heterogeneous, grade seven has not been. But also, it is very uncommon for middle schools to level the instruction of subjects like social studies, world geography. And it is more in line with what our benchmark communities have been doing for a long time. So we think that it is best for our kids' social, emotional needs and well-being, but also provides continuity of that course from grade six to seven with opportunities within a heterogeneously grouped course for students to be challenged at the appropriate level. Our teachers are really skilled at meeting students where they are and pushing them just a little bit further. So that would be what we'd expect to see from grade seven social studies next year. And that is everything from the middle school for next year. Happy to take any questions?
Yeah, I just said, so thank you for putting the homework statement in there. You and the staff were always really good about telling parents that they could do that, but I don't feel like people felt like they necessarily could. So I think putting it in writing in the program of studies is really helpful. So for the levels and groupings at the top, I would just suggest that you change that to course designation, so it mirrors the high school. And then looking at the word.
So Carrie, I actually did make that change after you sent me the email today.
Oh, okay.
But because Sherry had already put the items in the folder.
Okay.
It's already a PDF, but I did fix it.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you for the suggestion. It was a good catch.
Okay, great. And then the policy too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Derek for his work in doing the homework survey at the middle school. So how he was being responsive to some of the survey data and the conversations around middle school.
That's great. Yep. Quick question around, I guess it's more of a comment for when it falls under the kinds of kids who have to take tests in middle school. Is there a cap on how many tests that they can take with the teaming model? And I'm just thinking as the kids were studying for a test the next day, that might exceed a little bit more time when they're studying. If they have like three or four tests, hopefully they don't have three or four tests.
They should not have three or four tests. And if that is the case, I would like to be made aware of that. Given that we have academic teams at all grade, all three grades now, it is very easy to avoid that overscheduling of assessments into one given day. And also, you know, we should also be thinking about other ways to measure learning other than the traditional testing system that we use and other more authentic assessments whenever possible. But I really would not want to hear that a student has three or four major assessments on the same day. Now, could you have a quiz, two tests? Sure. And how much time a student spends studying for an assessment is gonna vary wildly from student to student. Even within the same household, you know, the approach that the kids take to preparing for an assessment is going to be difficult to measure unless you're standing there with them. And but what we really don't want to see is students who work hard all day long in school, going home to do another full day's work on homework. And hopefully that this helps parents to trust that if they do reach out and say, I had to put a stop to the English assignment this evening, that there's not gonna be a penalty for that on the side of for the student when they return to school.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Matt? Anyone online? Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, John, would you like to talk about the high school? It wasn't really a question.
No, I think the benefit of being the new guy is that you have a ton of questions. And I'm very appreciative to the directors and the coordinators and Erica for suffering through my, but why? But why? And I think some of the changes or updates, revisions that we were able to do with the high school program study really make it a current document, one that is much more user friendly. As Katie mentioned, coming in, if it's advanced placement US history, let's call it advanced placement US history instead of level one history. If you're taking honors biology, let's call it honors biology. And so I think the update to language as we go into course selection in a couple of weeks, it is really a critically important document for outlining what the Hingham High School experience is going to look like. So I'm not gonna go through the point by point. You have a rather detailed memo from Ms. Pollard. But if you have questions about science, social studies, fine arts, physical education, those particular areas that are outlined or any of the updated language that Erica put in the preamble, I'm happy to take questions.
Does anyone have questions? No?
Oh, I'm good.
I will give a comment. I particularly remember I have a freshman and a lot of freshman parents in my neighborhood this year, and everyone, a lot of people were very confused about the level two. Is this honors as my kid and not as it was August? And, you know, they just gotten their schedules and that was very confusing. So I appreciate the change. I think that will help.
Yeah. When I got here in July and was trying to understand the schedule, level one, in my thinking, would have been the lowest level, but it's our advanced placement here. And so it's much easier just to call it advanced placement with honors or college prep one or two.
Doesn't need both a number and a name.
I actually have a question.
Later.
On the Common App, they only have one section for course and grades for some of the larger universities. You have to plug in all of your academics in every class, of course, depending on what system the college uses. And they don't have a distinction between like college prep one and two, but they do have for honors, advanced and standard. So I was wondering how that would affect transcripts for that.
So I think that what we've learned about GPAs is that every college calculates them differently. And part of the way that they do that is based on information that our counseling department sends to each school, which also includes an explanation of what these, like what does college prep mean to us? What does advanced mean to us? And so even if there's only one sort of college prep slot, the difference would be on your transcript. So it'd be college prep one or college prep two on your transcript. And the college will be able to use that information plus the data from the counseling department to know what that means in this context.
Just adds later that where CP one, college prep one, and CP two, college prep two, is a widely used terminology that colleges would have an understanding because it's pretty commonly used terminology. But thanks for providing insight on the Common App.
I'm sure that you're not
Been a while since Derek and I have done a Common App ourselves.
So is it not aligned, just to follow up on that question, is the Common App not aligned with how most high schools? Is it my understanding what Slater said, that it's not aligned with how most high schools articulate their programs?
Because every school calculates GPA so differently, every college will take a student's transcript and put it through their own calculation. So for example, some schools include arts, for example, in the GPA calculation. Colleges do not. They only count the core content areas. And so colleges generally really pretty much ignore the school's GPA. And they go through and recalculate based on their own metrics, which usually in most cases is just calculating the core content classes.
All right. So I think we can take a motion.
Can we just accept this or do we approve this?
We approve them.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the changes to the program of studies for the secondary level for 2025 to 2026.
A second. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Matt?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Ally?
Hi.
And I am an I as well.
Thank you, Derek and John. You have permission to hit the road.
Safe travels.
Safe travels.
Okay. So we will move on back to item 7.1, which is to review proposed warrant article for the 2025 town meeting and act as appropriate.
Thank you. So grateful to Ayesha for working with town council, John Coughlin, on the proposed warrant articles this evening. So basically, in terms of those warrant articles, we laid it out, we laid it out in that memo in terms of, and we just need your vote on it, in terms of those few warrant articles. The first one being in terms of the giving, getting permission basically to be able to vote on our buses. We learned this year that even in terms of us being able to timely do that, it would help so much if you had that authority rather than waiting on town meeting every year to do so. This vote gives you that power, that authority going forward. And we extended it between three to 10 years just because of the 30B requirements. And I think going forward would be helpful in terms of that process as well.
And just to remind you, all of these warrant articles that we are reviewing, we've, this committee's already had discussion on which warrant articles before. So we're primarily looking at the language that will be submitted. So with that, do you wanna, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. So I'm looking at this and it looks like there are two things. So normally, or the way things are now, it has to go to town meeting if we want to lease or buy a bus, right? So and it looks from this memo like we are going to need to do that. Would it make sense to have two warrant articles, one that, you know, authorized the lease of the buses and then another one that gave the committee the authority going forward?
So when this came up, when I first drafted this, I drafted the two different warrant articles. And then in terms of the discussion with John Coughlin, he advised that we went that direction one. And secondly, if this didn't pass and we wanted to then put another article forward, then we could do that.
We would have to wait a year.
I beg your pardon?
We'd have to wait a year.
No, I'm saying if it didn't pass, if it didn't pass at town meeting, somebody, I think anybody from the floor could restructure it as well in terms of putting that forward. So you wouldn't have to, in terms of the approval for the electric buses and for the diesel bus, right? In terms of putting that forward on the floor. So we could change it on the floor.
They seem pretty different, though.
Can you change it on the floor after you've voted on it? I don't think so.
Yeah.
You would have to be a whole new warrant article.
It would be a new warrant. It wouldn't be an article. It would just, what you would be doing at that time is basically putting forward the approval of the three electric buses and the diesel because you wouldn't have the authority to do that anymore.
Right, but I don't think you can do that on the floor of town meeting.
A brand new, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can make changes, recommend changes to certain amendments, amend certain motions before they're voted on. I don't believe you can put a whole new
Yeah, I mean, when I gave him those three articles, he amended it and gave us this one back in terms of that, as well as what he was suggesting. I can go back to him again if you'd like me to and then ask him for us to change that and have a second one. But his suggestion was that if we have that approved, then you have the approval for it and you can move forward with that. And we wouldn't need to have to, but if it failed, I would think that you would need to put something over that.
I'm thinking that maybe John, John Coughlin is assuming that this
It will pass.
Yeah, I'm like, but what if it didn't? And then it sort of feels like if it didn't, then it's the next motion. Okay, you didn't give us the authority, but now we're here to ask for a new, and I feel like no to that too. I mean, I don't think that would happen, but I
Right.
I'm thinking he's kind of assuming that we'd get the permission.
Okay, I mean, if it is that you would like us to, we can definitely, it's not an issue. I can just have, we'll give him to draft.
An additional one. Because we wouldn't be changing this one. We would just be adding one.
You'd be adding another one.
And then what happens is that
And then if it does pass, then what happens? You just say, oh, well, we don't need this one anymore? I don't think that's how it works, we would do.
I've seen that. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you could, that could work, or you could just do approve, do this year's leases first.
Right.
And then say, now going forward, to save all you people this 20 minute of conversation, future meetings, why don't you just give the school committee the authority?
I think I'd rather that.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I can go back to him and check it the way you want it done. But I think in terms of just having that approval, if we can get that approval passed, we would have to go through the long discussion of like, something that's an operating activity right now. It's not something that's new in any way. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
I'm wondering if we just did as to what Michelle suggested, and then that covers us for, like the second one for going forward, covers us for years to come.
Right.
Yeah. So it's like you're saying, we are gonna vote on these buses, EV buses and one diesel. And then going forward, we want to do, have the authority to do this.
I'll follow up with him and see.
Okay.
Yeah. But initially, that's how I had it lined out, and he suggested that that's probably the better way to go forward based on his discussions with the town managers and himself.
And I don't think us, if we approve these tonight, which I still think we can because the language wouldn't change in that one. It's more just, do we need to
Just adding another one.
Add another one.
Okay. All right.
The next one is, do we want to do one at a time or are we gonna just approve all? And we need to do one at a time?
Just do one at a time.
Can we go ahead and do that one then?
Yes, so a motion for the school bus leases.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the town meeting 2025 warrant article for the school bus leases.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Matt?
Hi.
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Michelle? Hi.
Ally? Hi.
And I am an I as well. All right, moving on to the next one, which is the high school turf field. Ayesha?
Yeah, I think we kind of, you guys already approved the high school too as well. So just in terms of approval of the language.
Any questions? All right, so I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to add the high school turf field to the 2025 town meeting warrant.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Matt?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Ally?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Okay. Next one is
The high school roof. So the high school roof, what we're doing in the next agenda item, we also have agenda item in terms of the approval of an SOI for MSBA funding. One of the things that we're asking for this, with this high school roof is to get funding for design, architectural and engineering services, as well as the full cost of the replacement of the high school roof. I think you already voted for that one as well. The plan is to move forward with, and hopefully get MSBA funding on this, but I think this gives us that approval to be able to move forward, even if we didn't get the grant.
Okay. Should we have the?
So I.
I'm wondering, should we have the next discussion on, for seven point two? Is that impact?
Warrant article?
Warrant, oh, I guess not.
No.
No, it won't.
It's just to get approval for the warrant article to go into the warrant, the town meeting book. Yeah.
Okay, alright, is there any discussion on the high school warrant article? On the committee? Anyone on line?
You probably put this off for a year, right?
Don't even say that.
Just kidding.
I respect everyone to you, Tim.
I was hosting remote learning from your house.
T Dempsey at Hinghamschools.org.
Alright, I'll take a motion once.
I will make a motion to add a warrant article for 2025 town meeting for the Hingham High School roof.
Uh, second, any discussion? Alright, all is in favor, roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. Alright, next one is the PRS and South School roof.
So initially, your vote on those was to submit an article where we would put the two roofs together and have one article, that was your initial vote on that. And one of my, our recommendations here is to split it out into two separate votes, one for the PRS roof and one for the South roof. And in the case of the PRS and South roofs, what we would do in that instance would be to get funding for schematic design for those roofs and to put through an SOI with, we would, as part of that approval, also put an approval through for an SOI with the MSBA. And the hope is that if we, we normally have a 90 day timeline to get a schematic design done. We could then, at that point in time, get the schematic design done because we have the funding to do so. And MSBA also recommends that we wait 12 months. And after 12 months, we get approval from town meeting to be able to build the roofs as well. So hoping that even with that timeline and based on the assessment that we saw before and Matt's presentation, particularly South was one of the schools that we had a little bit more leeway with, PRS a little less so. But in terms of PRS, we've been doing a lot of repairs on the roof. Even as much as 20,000 this year on one of our roof repairs this year. We probably have to continue to do so until we are able to get that funding in place.
Okay, so? Any discussion, any questions?
Uh, no, so just clarifying, so this is simply for schematic design, not full replacement, so a significant reduction in what's being asked at town meeting. I mean, I think that, I mean, I think it makes sense, given the roof, potential high school roof project and other things that are up on the warrants from other town departments, so, yeah. I think it's a prudent thing to do.
Yeah, I would agree, I like separating the two and then kind of gives us a little bit more time to plan and for the town. Yeah, I like this idea. Matt, do you have any questions?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so the separating the two, all you're saying is the one we just voted on and this one, I thought you were saying that you wanted to separate the elementary schools a bit two more, but you're not saying that.
No, it's just, it's just because originally when we were voting to put these warrant articles forward, we had said, let's just do one warrant article for PRS and South roof. And now we're saying two things, one, we want to separate them, one for PRS and one for South, and we're only asking for a schematic design, we're not asking to replace the roof, funds to replace the roof this year.
Okay.
Got that right, Ayesha?
I don't really get, I mean, as you all know, I don't really understand town meeting like you do, like you all do. I don't really get the, if we're just asking for a schematic design, why it's important to separate the two, but I mean, I'm fine with it.
So I, I think the rules, MSBA has.
Great, sounds good.
Alright, anyone in public, questions?
I can make two motions?
Yes.
We're gonna get through all of these. I will make a motion to add a warrant article to the 2025 town meeting for schematics for the Plymouth River roof.
Uh, second, any discussion? Okay, all is in favor, roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I am an I as well.
And I will make another motion to add a warrant to the 2025 town meeting for schematics for the elementary school roof.
Uh, second, any discussion? Alright, um, roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle? Aye.
Ally? Aye.
And I am an I as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Ayesha. Alright, so we will move on to item seven point two, which is to authorize a superintendent of schools to submit statement of interest to the MSBA for Hingham High School, Plymouth River Elementary School and South Elementary School and to act.
Okay, so in terms of the MSBA, one of the things that the MSBA likes to make sure of is that the administration on its own isn't just submitting SOIs independently of the school committee and the select board. Because the funding and everything for those projects are so, it takes a community to do it. The MSBA wants to make sure that there's community support for those transactions. As part of that, we have specific language from the, from the MSBA in terms of those votes for the SOIs, and that's what this is here.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Comments, discussion?
Other than the fact that we get to listen to Ally for a very long, three times.
I, I was just wondering what, because it's, am I crazy? We talked about this the last meeting and said that it would throw the timelines off, or am I making that up in my head? Did we start talking about MSBA last week, last, was it two weeks ago?
Doing this, separating out the schematics.
Okay. Okay, they all blurred together. So I'm guessing what changed that we want to submit to the MSBA?
So, so what's happening here is that initially, I think we were hoping with the high school to move forward regardless of whether we got MSBA funding or not. But because it's a, it potentially could be similar to foster a grant of probably as much as 33%. We want to make sure that if it is that we need those repairs done, that we're at least applying for those grants and seeing if we can, we're gonna be, we're gonna be accepted into those programs. So the plan is to, to apply for the grants for all three roofs. The high school, we consider it the highest priority, so we will move forward with that even with or without MSBA support. And for the other two schools, we would just start a schematic designs this year. But next year, we will hopefully be in a position where we can apply for, we would apply for the grants this year and then also be able to take it to town meeting hopefully next year and be able to get those roofs passed as well.
And the window is just open to start the applications, I think that's maybe what you're thinking of, as I made that comment the last meeting or two meetings ago, but the window is just open for the applications.
Okay.
And I think we weren't entirely sure if the age of the roof, like what the parameters were around.
I was trying to remember, something in my head says we said no to MSBA for the roof projects before, and I'm wondering if I just make that up.
I think we thought the window wasn't open yet, we weren't entirely sure that the project would fall under their qualifications, but it does, and yeah.
Okay, great.
And, and they've changed, now it's only every other year too, so, and last year. They didn't do it last year, but now you can apply.
Okay.
And I think with the, and I think too, this is an accelerated program, so it does move a little bit faster. I think we moved pretty quickly with PRS. I think on the building, building projects going through the MSBA ads, you do get the benefit of the funding, but it does add a little bit of time. But I think with the accelerated repairs, the goal is to get these done, because they're kind of more emergency repairs that need to be done, so.
An emergency 10 years in the making.
Yeah, exactly. I think it moves a little faster. I think they like know by October, October then.
Okay, let me do that. Does anyone else have any questions, Matt?
Anything?
Alright, so, one of the, part of the rules with the MSBA is you have to give, certain language has to be said at our meeting, then recorded in minutes, to make us eligible to apply, so. With that, I will take a motion for the high school.
Going in the same order.
Yes.
Good time for a bathroom break, this could be a while.
Can you do the sunblock?
So I got it right here, don't worry. I will make a motion to resolve that having convened an open meeting on January 27, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Hingham, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit the Hingham High, or submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 2025 for the Hingham High School located at 17 Union Street, Hingham, Massachusetts 02043, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future priority five replacement renovation or modernization of school roofs. The membrane roofing has exceeded its 20 year warranty and is nearing the end of its 25 year life expectancy. The EPDM rubber system is in poor condition with evident seam separation and damage. Additionally, significant ponding is present and leaks throughout the building and impacting educational, athletic and physical plant operations. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Hingham Public School District to filing the application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second. Good job.
We have two more of those.
Alright, any discussion? Roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I am an I as well.
Moving on to Leth River School, take a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to resolve that having convened an open meeting on January 27, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Hingham, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 20, 2025 for Plymouth River Elementary School located at 200 High Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future priority five replacement renovation or modernization of school roofs. Most of the low slope flat roofs are tar and gravel systems installed in 1999 and nearly all are in poor condition. Ponding is evident across the flat sections indicating problems with the drainage system. Gravel has migrated into the gutters on the slope roof and sealant failure is visible in many areas. Recently, a large section near the gymnasium was repaired due to leaks affecting the building's main electrical feed and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitments from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Hingham Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second, any discussion?
I spaced out, can you just repeat that for me?
Anytime. Roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. One more, motion, motion for South Elementary.
I'll make a motion to resolve that having convened an open meeting on January 27, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Hingham, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 20, 2025 for South Elementary School located at 831 Main Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future priority five replacement renovation or modernizations of roofs. The EPDM rubber system is in fair to poor condition with visible seam separation and damage. Significant ponding and bubbling are also present. Excessive patching was observed on many of the low slope flat sections of the roof. The membrane roofing has exceeded its 20 year warranty and is nearing the end of its 25 year life expectancy. The three tab asphalt shingles are a lower grade option compared to architectural shingles and should be replaced. Notable patched areas were also observed on this type of roof and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment to the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Hingham Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second, any discussion? Alright, roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. Thank you very much, Ally. Now you get to put it all in the minutes. Alright, so we will move on to item seven point six, which is to approve grants and genations. Next as appropriate, I believe we have one in the packet.
Grants, yes, yes.
Yes, so this is a grant that I applied for, but Stacy ended up writing the memo once it was received. This is a proficiency grant that we've received from Desi before, and it will be used to fund the purchase of proficiency tests for world language testing that helps us to qualify students for the CLO by literacy and also for us to track program growth over time.
Same, we have any questions?
That's awesome.
None.
Great.
Get them out too.
Thank you.
There's Stacy.
Okay, I'll take a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the grant from Desi in support of proficiency-based outcomes and languages for the amount of $20,880.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I am an I as well. Alright, it was just the one, correct? So moving on, do we have surplus? Any of those? Ayesha?
No surplus.
No surplus, okay. So item seven point one, there's going to be surplus. Item eight, which is the subcommittee on project reports, warrant signed, start with Matt?
I don't have any updates tonight.
Uh, we had an educational programming subcommittee where we went over the program study. Uh, we saw the fruits of that tonight. At our next educational programming subcommittee will be Thursday, February 13th. We're going to be going over the middle of the year data from our MTSS system, and you can make it a double header and go to AdCom with us afterwards, so it'll be a big fun night.
Uh, the middle school council met today, there was a good discussion a little bit about the budget, but mostly about the youth risk behavior survey. Karen B, the K through 12 health coordinator, joined us, it was a good discussion. The next meeting is on February 24th.
Ally?
Policy is meeting on February 24th, so in a few weeks, and the Plymouth River School Council has a meeting tomorrow.
Um, and I just have that there are the finance, there are warrants in the packet. Alright, item nine, other items as may not, recently, you know, 48 hours chance of the meeting, we have none. Alright, so our next meeting is Wednesday, January 29th, at 7:00 PM, Capitol Outlay Meeting. And then we have meeting Tuesday, February 4th at 6:30. It's a joint meeting with the Select Board and Advisory Committee. And then Monday, February 10th, at 6:30 PM will be our public hearing on the budget.
Also tomorrow with AdCom, it's probably worth tuning in if anyone's interested in the budget.
Yes, so if you review the agenda items for that meeting, it's up here.
It's posted.
It's posted, so we were, I guess. So we were, I guess, there was, there was a little confusion with, um, it doesn't look like they're reviewing this education budget at that meeting or their agenda. There is an ACES meeting before that, but unfortunately, um, that's one, it's not posted.
Okay.
But three, but three, but three, three people can, um, can go.
Yeah, I mean, anyone can go unless, but people should, should go to, it's like, they're darn us.
Correct. Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
I will take a um, motion to adjourn to executive session, not to adjourn to open session.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A three, for the purposes of two group minutes from executive session held on January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the teachers.
I so declare.
And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an act is appropriate, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or mitigating position of the public body and the teachers.
I so declare. Okay? Uh roll call vote, Matt?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Ally?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Thank you. We are adjourned, thank you, enjoy the rest of the evening.